Good evening, this is the meeting for the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education for December 1st, 2025. May I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of particular pedagogical and non-pedagogical employees and matters made confidential under FERPA?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good evening, may I have a motion to return back to the public session?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good evening and welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for December 1st, 2025. Could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance, which will be followed by a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in the YCSD community that have lost loved ones, especially the father of Sean Kennedy, the father of Karen Peeler, the grandmother of Christina McCombs-Crisioni, and the grandmother of Julia Jane Tompkins. And we have the pledge of allegiance by our Mohanxik students, Nola Giommi and Hope Pedro.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
So Dr. Hatter, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. So first of all, families, students, faculty, staff, I'm sorry we were a few minutes late coming out of executive session, there was some, obviously some pressing business that we had to finish our discussion on, so I apologize, I know it's Monday night, it's cold outside, the kids are looking forward to a snow day, not gonna happen. So everyone's kind of looking forward to tomorrow, so I apologize that we were a few minutes late, maybe a little snow tomorrow, not too much, I hope. But I would like to invite Mrs. Berry to give a presentation, or to open the presentation. The audience is in for a really special treat with this presentation. For the board, you'll recall at our last meeting, you accepted a donation for a plaque for the Story Walk, but I don't want to give away too much of the presentation. Mrs. Berry, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hatter. Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure and honor, on behalf of our K3 students, faculty and staff, to welcome you to our good news presentation. The students are so excited to share their learning with you and introduce something very special for our entire K3 community. Thank you, parents, for being here this evening and for your continued support and involvement. Thank you for sharing your amazing children with us each day. A heartfelt thank you to Mrs. Dable, Mrs. Fromer and staff for being here this evening and all their efforts to bring the good news to you. Also, a sincere thank you to Mrs. Roper, our librarian, media specialist, for her creativity and initiative, and to our school community, especially our PTA, Mrs. Amerling and Dr. Hatter, for their continued support. I now welcome Mrs. Dable. Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Hatter and members of the Board of Education, Mrs. Amerling, Mrs. Sanfilippo, parents, families, staff and students. It is my absolute pleasure to be here this evening with some of our K3 students, their teachers and staff, to present the Mohanxik good news to you. We decided to highlight how stories come to life. You see, stories have been bringing people together for thousands of years. Long ago, they were told around campfires, then came the printing press for stories to be written and shared. Today, technology has transformed storytelling once again, and tonight, our students are going to be sharing how stories come to life in ways that our ancestors could never imagine.
Hi, my name is Nola Giommi. And I am Hope Pedro. And we are in Mrs. Dable's kindergarten class. We love reading books together. We read books from lots of authors. Some books give real information and some come from the writer's imagination. When we hear stories, we share our favorite parts. Reading makes our classroom come alive.
Hi, my name is Jack Williams. And I am Anastasia Velez. And we are in Mrs. Baumann's kindergarten class. And our class will read stories written by an author named Peter H. Reynolds.
His books teaches about kindness, creativity and believing ourselves. Some books we read are Ish, Sky Color and The Dot.
We sing songs and even make things just using one dot.
Hi, my name is Maya Greenberg. And I am in Mrs. Heinz's first grade class. We learned that Peter grew up in a family full of storytellers and adventurers. His childhood was spent camping, creating mini movies with his twin brother Paul, and filling sketchbooks with doodles and imaginary worlds. Becoming an author and illustrator was a way for him to share his love for using his imagination to tell stories.
Hi, my name is Andrew Antonetti. And I am in Mr. Ball's first grade class. Did you know that a writer writes so a reader can read it? And a reader reads what a writer writes? It is all connected. In first grade, we talk about books. In fiction, we know that books have stories, elements like characters and a setting. The illustrations help bring a book to life. Peter had one goal in all his books, and that was to inspire others to make a mark. A dot, a story, a smile, something that matters.
Hi, my name is Adriana Fella. I am in Miss Dable and Mr. McCartney's second grade class. Peter H. Reynolds made something special called a creative trilogy. He thought it would be fun to call it a great trilogy. Do you hear two words in that word, creative and trilogy? That means he made three stories that show how being creative, using your imagination and ideas can make amazing things happen. A trilogy is when someone makes three stories that all go together, like three best friends that throw one big story. And creative means using your imagination and to make something new or special.
Hi, my name is Anthony Zumpanel. And I am in Mrs. Dable and Mrs. McCartney's second grade class. In second grade, we used an app called Quiver. It's an app where you color a dot and wow, it turns into a 3D thing. On the screen, you can see it, move and play with it like it's real. Quiver helps kids be creative and help fun while learning.
Hi, my name is Georgia Carbone. And I am in Mrs. Burman's third grade class. We also use an app called ChatterPix. With ChatterPix, you can take a dot or any picture and make it talk. You draw a little line where the mouse should be, and then the app makes it move like it's really talking. You can record your own voice and the dot repeats what you say. It's like the dot comes alive right on the screen. We used it to practice speaking and storytelling, and it was so much fun.
I can do Kabbalah very well because I practice all day, every day.
I can do Taekwondo very good because I practice every day.
Hi, my name is James Halen. And I'm in Mrs. Burman's third grade class. In the last week of November, we got ready to walk, read and dream. We revealed a special thing at Mohanxik called a Story Walk. A Story Walk is where you read while you walk. The pages of a book are put up along a path outside, like on science or posts. You start at the beginning, read the first page, then walk to the next page to keep reading just like an adventure. It's a fun way to read, move and explore all at the same time, and we have a special place to do just that at Mohanxik. Can you guess our first book? The Dot by Peter H. Reynolds. So when you're on our campus, stop by and take a walk and enjoy our first book and let your imagination take you anywhere. Feed, dream and create because every story is a new adventure waiting for you.
Thank you to all our friends that presented here tonight. You all did an incredible job. Can we give them a round of applause because they were so good? None of this great work would be possible without the support of our Board of Education, Dr. Hatter, Mrs. Amerling and our PTA, our parents, our staff, and especially our teachers that are here tonight. I'd like to recognize all of them by just asking you to stand, so we can give you a round of applause too for being here. Thank you. On behalf of our Mohanxik family, we want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to share our work with you tonight, and we hope that you have the opportunity to come take a look and a walk through our Story Walk when you're on our campus. Thank you.
So, Mohanxik students, thank you so much for that presentation. This is absolutely fascinating. I had the opportunity to see the Story Walk. I'm not sure if any of the board members want to comment on what we saw tonight.
Mohanxik students, you are incredible. I loved hearing about your love for reading and having fun while doing it. ChatterPix sounds really amazing. I wish it was available when I was younger and, you know, I would, I would maybe read more. You're incredible, and thank you, families, for coming out tonight. It's, it's a school night and the week just started, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, boys and girls. That was very exciting and enjoyable. It's always the fun part of our night, and it's what puts a smile on my face, and it's why I keep coming back year after year. And it's obvious that the stories that you read and learned from really helped you guys because your reading is unbelievable. And not only reading, but standing in front of a group of people and reading was excellent. So congratulations to all of you for that. I did have a question. I don't know if Dr. Hatter can answer it or one of the teachers, but can you make the connection for me between the stories we just heard and Story Walk? Like, what is the connection there?
I think Mrs. Roper is probably best equipped to give some information about the Story Walk, but yes, there is a connection.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'm Christine Roper. I am the librarian at Mohanxik. The Story Walk is a great idea. You can see it was created by Ann Ferguson, developed in collaboration with Kellogg-Hubbard Library in Vermont. And basically, if you look around in other areas, people have done different takes on what it should look like. Ours is amazing, better than I ever could have hoped. From the generosity of the Mohanxik community, we were able to raise enough money to have it look as it does. The whole idea is really just to get stories that appeal to your heart. PTA generously purchased quite a number of books for us that we have in stock, ready to go. And my hope is that it will be, come kind of a seasonal opportunity for change and that the stories, you know, will just make you smile, give you some exercise and have fun while you're reading. So I hope you enjoy it. I hope you can take the time to come over and take a walk, read at the same time. Thanks.
Yeah, I would just like to say it was really great to see everybody get up and speak. It's very nerve-wracking to get up in front of a crowd, so you guys did a fantastic job. And also, learning how to read and having, having technology make it more fun, I think it was fantastic. And also, seeing some familiar faces. So everyone did such a great job. Thank you.
I just wanted to echo to what an outstanding, public speaking job each one of the students did. It's, when I look at how our students grow from year to year, from elementary through high school, and this is where it all starts. You should all be so proud of yourselves, parents, you have wonderful children and teachers. Thank you so much for what you do.
So I just wanted to echo a lot of what was said. I know so many of the students who are sitting here, just through day-to-day, seeing them at Mohanxik. And families, if I would have told you that your child would be standing in front of a room of adults, reading or publicly speaking confidently, so articulately, so comfortable in front of the microphone, I think you'd have said, wait a minute, I, I, I don't know, really? Will that be the case? And here they are, so impressive. I like to see the articulation as the younger students went first, and then we went up to our seniors at Mohanxik. So it was great to see that articulation. So, students, such a great job in so many different ways. Faculty and staff, thank you. Thank you so much. You guys, you guys are so amazing, and I hope you know that, but if not, I'd like to say it publicly, you're all so amazing. And families, thank you for giving us such amazing students to work with. For the portion of the day that, that we have them, we cherish, we, we treasure that time, we take our jobs very seriously, and we appreciate the partnership that we have with the families in the community and certainly with the school. So, thank you. That's, and to be out here on a Monday night, it's so early in the week, you have so many responsibilities and bedtimes and lunches to prep and snacks to make and all the other things that go with being a parent of a Mohanxik student or a child, a school-aged child. So thank you so much for being here, for making the time to be here. Students, one last thing about that snow day, all right? There are rumors that if you, don't put anything down the toilet, don't, don't flush anything down the toilet, but they say that if you wear your pajamas inside out, it might help, or if you put a wooden spoon, I think, under the pillow, or all the other myths that are out there. But the truth is, I'll know it about five o'clock in the morning, and so will you, what, what's gonna happen. So I don't know tonight, all right? But you guys did such a great job, all right? Congratulations. We will take just a brief five-minute recess that'll allow you to get on with your evening. If you choose to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to. We have Hunter giving a presentation, I'll be giving my report as well, but if you choose to depart, have a great evening. Thank you so much for coming out tonight.
All right, we will go to public comment number one. Do we have anyone in that? All right. So then Hunter, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Good evening. I hope everyone enjoyed a relaxing Thanksgiving holiday. The winter athletics season began last week at Yorktown High School. We have a wide variety of sports offered this winter, and many of our teams will kick off their season this week with competitions. Concert season is upon us. Throughout the month of December, our schools are live with the sound of music. Yorktown High School will feature a concert each Tuesday, beginning with the YHS Choir Winter Concert tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM at the high school. On Wednesday morning, our second graders at Brookside Elementary School will hold their winter concert. For more information on the many concerts taking place this month in our schools, I encourage you to check out the website. Prior to the Thanksgiving holiday, Brookside and Mohanxik each held their balloons parade with different floats designed and created by students. The designs were very impressive, and we appreciate the hard work of the students and their dedicated teachers who facilitated their visions in making these floats. As we close out the fall athletic season, I want to recognize the teams and athletes who achieved great success this fall. The girls' and boys' volleyball teams were both section champions. The girls' volleyball team went on to win the regional championship and were state semifinalists. The boys' volleyball team went on to be regional finalists. Our league champions were the boys' volleyball, girls' tennis and girls' soccer. Now, special congratulations to athletes who received all-section, all-conference and all-state awards. For football, Tyler Galante, Rocco Lory, Michael DeSiderio and Tyler Carigatti. For boys' soccer, Gavin Mooney and Haniel Flores. Girls' soccer, Lea Bryant, Amanda Lindenhan and Olivia Delgado. For field hockey, Lily Diaz, Ava Ryan, Riley Greve, Megan Durante, Claire Sullivan and Adrian Torriari. For girls' volleyball, Mia Reardon, Emma McCoy, Natalia Leon and Kaylee Alexander. And for boys' volleyball, Justin Sek, Jack Brunner and Franklin Ringel. Thank you.
Thank you, Hunter. Dr. Hatter, we'll go to you for your update.
Okay. So there are a bunch of things to provide the community with an update on. I hope everybody had certainly an enjoyable Thanksgiving. As we return to school, we return to the potential for inclement weather tomorrow. We'll be monitoring the forecast overnight and making a determination early in the morning. So I have eight updates that I'd like to offer, but there's also an additional on a, on an agenda item that I'd like to also shine light on. We are amending our professional development day for the spring, for this school year's calendar, from March 19th to March 20th. So I just wanted to clarify that. We'll certainly send that out in our monthly newsletter that's set to go out, I believe, tomorrow. In terms of the 19th of March, that will now be a regular school day as opposed to a superintendent's conference day. March 20th will now be a superintendent's conference day as opposed to a regular school day. We'll certainly highlight that in the upcoming newsletter. So with regard to the updates that are prepared for you this evening, the musical, the show must and it will go on, will be the, I'll be recommending to the board this evening that we appoint Mr. Jeremy Newberger as the director of this year's play. We're excited to welcome him to our district. Auditions will take place in December, so we have a very aggressive timeline, and we'll have more details with regard to the show dates, the show that we'll be putting on, all of that will come out in the next week or so. Our high school concerts, I wanted to make sure that we had this slide on tape for our community. So many great things are happening. All members of our community are welcome to attend. The show dates are there, as noted. All are going to be held in the Yorktown High School auditorium, just for clarification, but please note the difference in start times between the middle school and high school. With regard to construction, I'm trying to give an update on the construction project at each of our Board of Education meetings. So at Brookside Mohanxik, you see the site work continues, the foundations have been poured, we're waiting for the steel to arrive and then to be assembled. At the high school, a lot of the drainage work is underway, so much of the site preparation for the lower turf field, that's the baseball field hockey field, that's already underway. So the, the project is moving according to our timeframe and within the budget that was specified. As an update for our community, January 20th, 2026 marks when DESH's law goes into place for all New York State public schools. There has to be specific written cardiac emergency response plans for districts. We're ahead of the curve in so many regards, and there's just greater clarification of AED locations, protocols, the staff who are trained, the plans have to be site-specific. So each venue that hosts, irrespective of whether it's an athletic event, a performing art event, or otherwise, has to have a specific cardiac emergency response plan in place that includes locations of AEDs. So in order for us to have our compliance met on this, our safety plans have to be updated to reflect DESH's law. That has to be done by January 20th. The board meeting prior to January 20th is January 12th. So we'll be holding a hearing, or I'll be asking for the board to hold a hearing on that date, and adoption of our revised emergency response plan. The plan must be posted to our website at least 30 days. I believe it went up to our website today, so it's available for members of our community to view. Elementary lunch, I just want to speak to the elementary lunch. There have been a couple of inquiries with regard to the time spent for lunch and recess at our K5 level specifically. I do want to note that, yes, it's 40 minutes for that period, but there is passing time of three to four minutes on either side of that lunch period, so it's 46 to even 50 minutes actually of lunch and passing time. So I would certainly like to see more lunch, but there are some realities that our school district faces, that many school districts within New York State face. So minimum hours of instruction at the K5, actually at the K6 level, it's 900 hours of instruction are required over the course of 180 days that the state recognizes. Lunch, recess, passing time, other non-instructional times are not recognized within that 900-hour count. So as we add time to lunch, we now become dangerously close to not meeting that minimum threshold that we're required to meet, and that also has stated implications. In addition, if we increase time at lunch, the time's gotta come from somewhere. In elementary school day, the time is generally spent, not exclusively, but generally spent on English language arts, mathematics and special areas. Special areas are a requirement as part of commissioner's regulations. So the only true place to find that time is by taking away English language arts or math instruction. And moving from just arbitrarily 40 minutes to 60 minutes is what I chose. That equates to approximately 12 full days of instruction. So we would lose an additional 12 full days of instruction to add time to a lunch period, and that, that time would essentially come from math and ELLA instruction. So yes, extending lunch is terrific. I, I don't think anyone would object to that, but I think on the other hand, we have to look at what we're trading off to increase lunchtime, and the trade-off seems pretty high and pretty significant. Also, there are collective bargaining agreements in place, and that's just a tertiary consideration, but certainly the minimum number of hours instructionally that we have to meet, as well as where do we take the time from, is a consideration that we certainly have to be mindful of. We had a senior citizen breakfast on November 21st. What a great group. We invited seniors in. It's something that we do a couple times a year, and we talk about just what's happening in the schools, and the senior citizens have breakfast. I give them an update on, on what's happening in our district. They ask questions that are on their minds, and we just have a great time talking about our district and the great work happening here. We're having another breakfast in April. It's at their request, it's at April. I, I told them I would have the breakfast whenever they wanted, and they suggested to avoid the winter months, and let's have breakfast again in April. So we'll invite our senior citizens back into the district in April. If you know someone who lives in our community, who is a senior citizen, who would just like to talk about teaching and learning in Yorktown, some of the great programs, please share that email address, eparys@yorktown.org. That's my assistant, Erica Paris. She accepts our reservations, and we'd love to have an even bigger group at our April breakfast. Our superintendent student council has been hard at work already this school year. We're essentially just finishing November, and the priorities that they've outlined are even more ambitious than what they achieved last school year. Last school year, you'll recall, and Hunter was on the superintendent student council and played an integral role in getting the C lot paved and some other really important changes made. This year, the superintendent student council at the high school level has set four priorities. And I love each of these four, and they didn't want to reduce the number of priorities, they want to try to get all of these They want to try to get all of these done. They've actually asked to double our meeting frequency times from once a month to twice a month so that we can achieve these goals. So they'd like to work on adding some additional mental health supports in the district. They are really interested in an outdoor seating, dining area, study area. The terminology that we've used in our meetings is they'd like a place that's a little bit more formal than the cafeteria, but less formal than the library. And that space in our building really doesn't exist right now. And so we're going to work to try to make that happen. They're really excited about creating this AI financial literacy lab within our school district that almost mimics a Wall Street trading floor. So that's something that they're really excited to explore. And our board may recall, and certainly our community may recall, that we started these I grants for our faculty and staff a couple years ago. And that program has been incredibly successful in engaging faculty, hearing faculty voice on ways that we can enhance our work here, whether it's teaching and learning or otherwise. And their thought was to start a student I grant program where students can bring their ideas forward to improve our school district. They would submit an application. The council would review the applications and make determinations as to whether to fund the project or not. So it really goes to this board's mission of elevating student voice and really hearing what our students have to say. And so they came up with four great ideas, and they did not want to let any one of those four ideas go. And when you look at that really impressive list of ideas, it's hard to blame them for not wanting to let any one of these go. Hunter alluded to this, and this was such a great event in both schools. On the left, it's Brookside, there are balloons over Brookside. On the right, it's Mohansec, balloons over Mohansec. It's inspired by the Balloons Over Broadway book, a Thanksgiving-inspired book that Brookside certainly has been doing for many years, and Mohansec certainly in recent years has taken on. And what a great event as students bring characters from books that they enjoy to life and essentially parade around the building with their floats. So just a wonderful, wonderful way to close out the week going into Thanksgiving. That is the report that I wanted to provide to you. I'm happy to accept any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Dr. Hatter. So we will move to board reports. I'll take the first two and then pass it over to Mike for the next two. So the AI committee, we have a meeting coming up. It looks like it's going to be next week. And Dr. Hatter will be sending out the calendar invites, so it's on everyone's calendar. And then audit committee, no updates at this time.
Thanks for your time. Facilities projects, Dr. Hatter has been providing updates at our meetings on the progress that the construction teams are making. We continue to meet every other week as the Facilities Projects Committee, where we are simultaneously planning the next projects and monitoring the progress of the ones that are already started. So it's quite challenging. There's a lot that goes on. There's a lot of moving parts. But I think the most important message is that we continue to stay on pace, on time, and under budget. So that's really what it's all about. If we can continue to do that as we move forward, we'll be very, very happy at the end. Fiscal advisory, nothing new to report there. Our next meeting will be in the middle of the... Beginning of the budget season. We're looking at the week of January 12th for our next meeting, which would put us just after the first round of budget meetings that the administration is holding. So once they've done that, we'll be able to meet and discuss where we're at.
Thank you, Mike. Policy committee, Cheryl is unable to attend tonight, but we do have four policies on the agenda for a second read and adoption. So we are going to move to that. Motion to approve a second reading and adoption, 4327 home instruction, 7100 facilities planning, 7365 construction safety, 8110 school building health and safety.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we are going to go to consent agenda. This is a format we started at the last meeting to make our meetings more efficient. So result that the Yorktown Central School District approved the consent agenda, which include agenda items 10 to 14, 10 board matters, item 10.01 to 10.02, 11 personnel matters, item 11.01, 12 business matters, item 12.01 to 12.03, 13 pupil personnel matters, items 13.01 to 13.02, 14 gifts, grants, and donations, item 14.01.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we are going to jump to number 15, which is board comments. We'll start with Peter.
Sure. Just again, our good news. That's Mike said it earlier. That's why we come. That's really it. Now, but again, Jaclyn, your first board meeting, I hope it's everything you dreamed of. And welcome.
And so much more. Thank you very much. No, it was great. It was wonderful to see the kids again. I still brought Brookside last week and the last time Mohansec, and I love seeing the faces because, you know, some failure in the district and the community. So it's always nice to see that. Thank you also. Mike?
Yeah, I agree. Sorry, a couple of other items. I'm liking the consent agenda. Kind of moves things along a little quicker, which is always important. And to that end, I am also giving a shout out to Hunter. I appreciate your reports. They're not only informative, they give us a good view from your level and the student level, and you put a lot of thought into them, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Hatter, I want to say when we first started the superintendents, the student council, we didn't know exactly how it would go and what we would expect. But we thought it was a good idea, and I think it's proven to be a great idea. So thank you for making that happen. They're amazing. I mean, all four of them are amazing. The third one in particular sparked my interest. So I can't wait to discuss more on that, but it's really a great concept. And I think these two I grants are fantastic. So and it's great when they come to the board meetings and they present what their ideas have been, have taken effect. All right. So we're going to go to public comment number two. All right. So no one signed up for that. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Have a great night. Thank you.